Well, welcome. Would you all please stand for pledge to the flag? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Well, welcome. We will start the meeting with anybody that has some updates or bravos that they want to talk about. That would be great.
Well, I think school's starting. I think it's starting on Wednesday, and I can tell because I couldn't get through my streaks. It was open house tonight in Johnson and I think at the other elementary schools. So, that's great to see everybody out and getting excited. And don't forget, school goes for it Wednesday, like your parents would let you at this point because they probably want you out of the house too.
Anybody else?
Fall sports are in full swing. Did the Hall, had the Hall of Fame this past weekend. I went in there, but looked awesome.
It was a great event. It really was.
Yeah.
I know there's gonna be a shocker, but Mr. Mueller said this might be the best class.
Wait a second.
Those were all my people when I taught there.
It was, it was pretty awesome.
Yeah.
They recognized the 2005 and six girls' state soccer champions. It was a tearjerker. It was pretty good.
That's good.
Well, I want to talk about a couple of things. I want to talk about teachers. And, you know, the old saying is the best thing about teaching is June, July, and August. And the reality is, teachers don't get June, July, and August off. I mean, they're going to workshops, they're taking kids. We're gonna talk about FCC LA today. They're taking kids on trips. They are out there doing PD. Sometimes they're working on another, you know, more schoolwork and that sort of thing. So, I really want to applaud them. I think they're ready to get back into school and, you know, see some kids. And then the other people that I want to talk about is our leadership team. Jamie and Keith and Ryan, you all have done such a good job. Met two-day retreat with us, met two-day or three-day retreat with all the leadership people. We've been making plans, so you all that are in the high school and actually every school be ready to get going from the day we start because they are, they're gonna hit the ground running. So, I want to thank you all for that. It's a good team.
It is a great team.
All right, you want to add any other bravos?
I got one.
Okay.
Well, I just, I wanted to recognize, so, you know, we always do the consent agenda. In that, we always do all personality. You always see all these people that spend their time volunteering for things like Girls on the Run and, you know, other, you know, department chairs and everything where they basically are putting extra time in and they already put a ton of time into things. But I wanted to recognize a friend of mine who, Kevin Orum, who after nine years had resigned from basketball. So, he had a great run in, on basketball team. You know, you can't do a whole lot better than win a state title. He decided he's gonna spend some more time with his family activities. And so, I saw him on here and I just wanted to do a shout-out for him after all those years of stepping back and excited to do some different things.
It's a special place. A lot of people give them a lot of time, your children, other people's children, so.
Yes.
All right, anybody else?
I have a couple. We're gonna recognize our FCC LA national blowfires here soon. But not on that list is their sponsor, who was recognized as the, for the, our own award through KATSES, which is a really cool state award because it is all of the, and correct me if I'm wrong, but I believe it's all of the teachers from across the state who identify the most impactful teacher amongst them. So, I couldn't agree more. They didn't give me a vote. I'm trying to get their shirts changed to blue. Also, Johnson was recognized as the K-12 Excellence in Environmental Education. They'll be recognized this fall by the KAPT. Our journalism program had an amazing showing this summer at the, at the State Journalism Association. It beat Superior, seven excellence, and nine honorable mentions for students involved. Rachel Caswell from Woodville was identified as Kentucky Department of Education Council Advisory, which is quite an honor to be on that group. We're gonna recognize some broadcast journalism recipients tonight too. And then I'll just echo the excitement about going back to school. I mean, I'm sort of sick, but I do get very excited and I know that, that our team is ready. Thanks to the Board of Education for our opening day. It is so neat to have 365 people all assemble in the auditorium and Performing Arts Center. Have a breakfast that's organized by your Board of Education, have gift cards that are given out because you guys donate to make sure that our people feel welcome and special. So, really neat place that we're in. Great team.
It was fun. Thank you.
Yeah, well, and I would say thank you especially to Anne for, for all the work and effort she puts into that. She was already telling me thoughts and plans for next year's opening day breakfast. So, thank you for, for representing the board and all the work on that.
Well, thank you.
And then bringing joy all year round.
Or mayhem.
So, we'll continue doing that.
It was awesome. Thank you, guys.
Okay, the next thing is FCC LA National Winners. So, Erin, will you come up and introduce, bring your, bring your people up here and introduce them? And for those of us or those who don't know what STAR Events is and the National Meeting, talk about that too. That'd be great.
So, end of June, first of July, I went to Denver, Colorado for the FCC LA National Leadership Conference. These three, as well as Annie Bowers, she just finished a golf match, so she's not here yet, competed in STAR Events, and that's just a wide variety of topics and events that students can compete in. They started at the regional level in February here in Kentucky, and then they competed at the state level in March. And if they placed first or second at the state level, then they were advanced on to Nationals. And so, all four of these advanced to Nationals and they competed there. Also, the middle school chapter was recognized as the top middle school winner of the National Programs Community Service Awards. So, they were the top middle school program award winner, and they got huge plaques. We'll send over to middle school and a thousand dollars for it there. Stuff the Backpack Project that they did to create items for foster care students. But competing, we had Michael. He competed in Career Connections and he placed, he got a silver rating. They don't necessarily rank there. Annie Bowers also placed silver in Food and Nutrition. And then Alat and Laney placed in the top ten in their event. Alat came in sixth in the nation for Focus on Children, and then Laney came in fourth in the nation for her event management project. You can ask them. Thank you.
All right, any questions?
Well, I'm interested to hear what they, what kind of presentations they actually did. Who's going first?
Oh, Miss. So, I, mine was event management and you had to create like an event that would raise money for local college. So, I built off of our National Community Service Project and I did a foster program. And we basically planned out what event we were doing, if we were gonna do that on our FCC LA level.
I did Focus on Children, which is basically you create a lesson plan for a certain age group to help bring awareness to specifically areas. So, I did mental health and I had the children's draw like a worry monster. And our fashion students back at Highlands sewed them into stuffed animals and it helps spread awareness for worries and things like that.
I did career investigation, where you, where you investigate a career and then you, like, talk about what that career is and how you want to do that career or how you have the goals to do that career.
What career?
For your student.
For photography.
Okay. Yeah, working with Mahalas. Anything else? Well, I will tell you, for those who don't know, FCC LA has been around for how many years?
Nineteen forty-five.
Nineteen forty-five. And it's really built on Student Center presentations, you know, they run the show. And so, when you start working with kids, there's a little bit that's, you know, you kind of worry about because they're, they're the ones that are out there saying things, planning it, they're doing everything. But they get very good at it. So, there's lots of skills that you've learned along the way because of that. So, I congratulate you. I congratulate you, Erin. You're probably thinking about next year too, aren't you?
I've already planned it.
That's right.
Planned it two weeks ago.
This is an organization that exemplifies all the, all the things we're trying to do as a school where, where there are critical skill sets, but you're putting it into action. You're applying what you know and doing it in new settings. So, congratulations.
And Erin, I want to talk about your award too. I know, I know. She's kind of funny about being noticed. But it's an award where people notice when you're not, when you're not looking, you know. It's they just, you're not filling out a binder, you're not turning in papers, you're not saying, please judge me. It's just they sit down and go, who am I thinking about for this award? So, that's huge. So, congratulations. We're gonna keep honoring you.
Yeah.
Being you. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
All right, the next section is the Broadcasting Awards. And Brennan is a one-man show, like he's used to being with a microphone. So, he's gonna come up and if you will tell us all the awards and where they came from, that would be awesome.
Absolutely. So, thank you guys for having me out. Obviously, love talking about the program, but first thing, not the only person you want to award on the list, all the students and who won. So, for nonfiction piece, we had Emma Barton, who graduated last year, Emerson Fraley, Emma Dur, and Travis Hotel. For animation and special effects, we had Liam Delaney, Emma Barton, Hayden Rolf, and Wizzy Surry, John Exterkamp, and Max Hamilton, as well as Hayden Rolf winning for audio editing. So, I've had a lot of people come up to me and congratulate me on the award, but the biggest thing I'm telling them is this was a big win for the program in general to have so many students with such a high level of success. And it covered five states, so Kentucky, Ohio, Indiana, West Virginia, and Illinois. We're all in this regional chapter, so some very competitive states. You know, if you think of the big sport state schools like San X Louisville, Mayo, those are the really big schools that put time into this as well as Highlands. So, it was a lot of fun and an honor to compete against those schools.
Well, I want to read what it's called, the Ohio Valley Chapter of the National Academy of Television Arts and Sciences. It's the Regional Student Production Award, so it's a big deal.
Yeah, and to advance the national competition, that is just such an honor. It's awesome. We're able to do it with students at Highlands.
Did you get to create on the fly while you were there or did you create it head-to-head?
So, I put together a video package. It was about fifteen minutes long.
Like a highlight reel?
Yes. Of, of some of what I considered my best work through multiple sports. So, not just football, but football, basketball, when I did some baseball, anything that I did, I put in there and submitted off. And it was a virtual show. So, before the COVID pandemic hit, they get people together in a big room in Indiana. But since then, nothing has moved on that. So, right now, we're actually waiting on the trophies. They were supposed to be shipped here soon, so. That was something we're waiting on.
Well, look what's shipping right now.
Awesome.
The trucks will probably be here soon, but I think.
Brennan, what are you broadcasting for? What sports do you announce?
So, right now, it's football. I'm gonna dip into some other things. Soccer, I think is something we're looking into. Obviously, that big project with the field is gonna help us with that. But my big three right now are football, basketball, and baseball. And then the biggest project we did was on Bluebirds Radio. And we were able to, to get a set that could move on the road. So, like with football, I'm fortunate enough to be able to go down to Lexington Catholic to be able to broadcast that game and, you know, just be able to travel all, all around to, you know, to bring the sports closer to the people of Fort Thomas.
I was gonna ask if you had a broadcaster voice, but I think it's new.
What, do you know what the national competition will hold or what, what you have to do there?
So, because I won this, they automatically sent that tape off to who votes on the national award. And I find that up on the top four, I believe, finalist in October, and then the show is January twenty-fourth.
And you're just going into junior year, so, okay, wow. That's pretty cool to achieve that. You're only going up and up?
So, we had a report about, about their recognition from Mr. Pop. And I said, well, we, we like to recognize state champions at the, at the award meeting. Does this constitute a state championship? And so, he sent me a three-page document of all the schools that competed in West Virginia and Ohio and Indiana. So, this is a, this is a big deal.
Regional championship.
It's a regional championship.
This is the Emmys.
And, and the Up in Flames production that was about?
Yeah, that was a Beverly Hills.
Yeah.
Oh, okay. They've, they've been here before.
That was a big, that was definitely a big one. And that one at least won. It might have won two.
How long is that? Is it like a, like a team?
It was a lo, I think it was a longer piece.
Yeah.
Around, I think, because it was in the long nonfiction category.
They've come before us, that group that did it. I just remember us talking to them because.
And Brennan, as you guys noticed, when he picks up the microphone, he, he just, he has that presence about him. But, but that comes from a lot of, a lot of hard work and saying yes to, to just about anything that you throw his way. So, I'm super proud of, of your progress, Brennan, and, and being the voice of the Bluebirds.
I appreciate it. Thank you very much.
Great. Good luck.
Okay, we have one thing for the community forum.
Okay.
Let me just do my opening statement here. The community forum portion of the meeting of the Board of Education is an opportunity for members of the community to informally address the board about a variety of topics, including issues for further consideration. Since the topics raised may not be issues listed and advertised on the public agenda, the community forum is not intended to be a setting for a dialogue with the board. Direct questions may be referred to the appropriate district personnel for future response. Answer briefly if the matter of procedure or tabled as they may be future agenda items. Speakers who have registered at the reception area are asked to identify themselves, state their reason for addressing the board. Please address the Board of Education as a whole through the chairperson rather than the individual. And as always, questions or comments pertaining to an individual, student, employee, or community member cannot be discussed in open meetings. Okay? And we have one person, Melanie. Melanie Powers?
Yeah. Okay, I'm up to the podium.
You want to come up to the podium?
I thought I was just submitting a question.
Oh, you, you want me to ask a question? It's fine. Okay, all right.
Is this it?
Yes.
I hope it be as good as the.
Yeah, you don't have to say.
He's a hard act of thought.
Anyway, I'm here today because I'm very interested in the new soccer complex that's going in. I went to the public forum that you did at the Mass Hall, and I had quite a few questions, but two or three that I thought were important. And the very nice gentleman that was there in the corner that I went to, if you recall, you had three corners. And he agreed they were worthwhile. You know, he did not know the answers. And I still don't know the answers, and I, I think they're good questions. So, my basic overall question, which you see there, is when will the next public forum be? So that people in the community at large in Fort Thomas can participate, ask questions. That's all.
Thank you.
We actually, tonight are, are gonna, on the agenda is we're asked to put some of the project out for bid. So, there are no, no additional specific community forum schedule. However, I'm happy to, to meet with you after the meeting or, or in person and answer any questions that, that you possibly could have.
All right, thank you. Okay, we'll move on to action items. So, Jerry, you gonna talk about the roof first?
You guys can go if you want.
Thank you. We missed the lid there.
You gotta stay.
So, first up is the Highlands roof replacement. We had a little bit of a phone conference this afternoon just to kind of go through everything, wrap everything up in terms of kind of the plan now and then as, as school starts. So, you know, you saw a lot of the material that they've had on site, particularly the kettles for the tar disappeared today. So, the area that was in between middle school and high school is clear now, and they've got a lot of the material from in front of the gym cleared. They'll get the rest of that cleared tomorrow. So, they still have, they have all the hot work done, meaning everything involving tar, which was the main part of the roof and then the gym roof. They are now gonna be transitioning to a part where they are kind of finishing up the roof. They will be up on those sections of the roof. They will minimize noise as best they can during the school day. They're not anticipating a lot. They, we were gonna work to schedule. They still have work to do over the two entrance canopies. But we're gonna try and schedule that around activities that we don't have to kind of impede those entries or put up any kind of safety devices, whether it be scaffolding and covers like we did at Moir during that project. That may become necessary if we just can't kind of work it into the schedule with, with off days and things like that. And then they still have to do the section of the roof over the media center where the cooling tower is. They're gonna get started on that kind of over the media center, and they're gonna work their way around so they can try and finish that work up as the cooling tower is being exchanged, for lack of a better term, over fall break. So, they'll be there every day, but you won't have the same issues that we dealt with fall/summer in terms of tar to kettle and things like that. They feel very good about where they are, you know, but there is still work to do. And, you know, I'm sure that it, there will be some periods where maybe the noise level, especially up on the third floor, might raise a little bit. But, you know, we talked about processes for trying to report that to let them know so that they can kind of try and minimize that as much as possible. So, any questions?
So, do you feel good about where they are?
Yeah, I do. And, you know, and like we talked last Thursday, after we, we saw the amount of additional wet insulation that had to be dealt with, that was a very wise decision to move on the roof when we did. So, we do have a pay application number two, the amount of one hundred and thirty-six thousand, one hundred and seventy dollars.
Okay. Any more questions or any?
I don't think so. The only thing, last week, we talked about the balancing controls and the, and I think you had a.
That's on the next project.
That's on our next one, yeah. On our, yeah, I'm going, I'm going, I'm going to put them all together.
You're a little ahead.
Yeah, yeah. All right, we'll get to that one. I got nothing else on the road.
I need the motion for the approval of the pay application number two to end this roofing in the amount of one hundred and thirty-six thousand, one hundred and seven dollars for the Highlands roof replacement project.
I'll make a motion.
Second?
I'll second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Those. Okay. Want to go the next?
Next up should be the Guaranteed Energy Savings Contract. That project is about ninety percent complete. Obviously, we still have the cooling tower that has to be installed over fall break principally on that Thursday. So, we'll have to do a crane lift and probably restrict traffic or, you know, we're closing the mortar parkway for a little bit of time, the time it takes to get the existing cooling tower off and the new cooling tower up. But we'll coordinate that with all the other events taking place that weekend, particularly everything surrounding homecoming. They are still continuing to do the balancing and the controls. At present, we don't, we can't see anything and we can't control anything, but working with our technology department, they're making strides toward hopefully getting that to appear visible to us. And we have some measure of ability to control things by the end of this week. So, it may not be for the first day of school, but I can tell you that CMTA and their contractors and subcontractors have been very responsive. I got a text message from Ms. Oldenheim Saturday night at eight, and I contacted CMTA and they actually had a Comfort Systems employee get to middle school at nine PM on Saturday night to look into a potential issue because they were afraid it could be indicative of, of a larger issue. And so, that employee did not have a badge, so I was at my house unlocking doors for him to get access to go in and do things. So, we had about six people working Saturday night just on what turned out to be, you know, small issuing or working through, trying to get things as best we can for Wednesday until we get full control. They continue to do controls and balance work on, you know, all three floors because they feel good about where they are. They felt like they had the third floor done, and then as they do the second floor, they go back up and check some stuff on the third. And then they're, you know, as they do other stuff, they're, they're trying to make sure that when it's done, it's done, it's done right. All the other equipment is in, installed. You know, we feel pretty good about where we are. Good, good portions of the middle school. A lot of people I've talked to, they feel it's a little chilly in there. There are some spots that, you know, some people might feel a little warm, but that's just part of that balancing and controls process we're going through. And, and we went through that on all the buildings.
There's surprises in this project based on.
No. No. It's been, it's been a good group to work with. We, we have been really lucky. I feel like just about every project I've, I've worked on on behalf of the district, we've had good experience with their contractors. That doesn't, I mean, all of them were perfect, Brennan. I know well the ones that were not, as do some of you. But I feel pretty good about this one. And, you know, when, when you, you will get to a very substantial pay application here in a moment because there's, there's always one that's really big on every project. So, any questions or concerns that people have raised to you?
No, I think when we started this process, it was a question of, hey, is this a great way to go to do this project or not? So, I guess, you know, we're hearing from you is that, yeah, this was, this was the right direction. And in the long run, this has been.
And I, I didn't, they, they have done, you know, done all the LED lighting in a lot of schools. They're still have lighting work to do at the middle school and certain areas of the high school, particularly High Bay areas, gymnasium, fieldhouse, places like that. We're working to coordinate that schedule so they can get that work done. And then going back and addressing some things, because a lot of this work was done over the summer. So, now when our staff comes back, they ask questions and they see things and they try things. So, you know, we're, we're getting reports back from our staff and then working to try and address the questions they may have raised as well. So, that, that lighting work will continue after school hours. They work Monday through Thursday for ten hours from about three PM on. And so, that's how I have Valley Electric, so. That work continues in addition to that HVAC work. But when it's all said and done, I think everyone's gonna be very pleased.
Well, I feel like they've been, everything they promised and what their timeline's been, they've hit it. I mean, aren't, aren't you happy where we are?
Yes, very much so. They, they said we would be a little certain point by July one. We were there. By August one, we were there. I think anybody that's done HVAC projects before knows that when you get to those last details, particularly balancing and controls, that's where you end up, you know, with a little bit of unpredictability with the schedule because, you know, as they go through that work, you just find things. And I feel like they're doing their due diligence to make sure when they leave, we have a product that we will promise.
And in large part is a result in cooperation with our, our middle school custodial team. It's not that often when, when you engage in a, in a project this substantial that I think we could, we could have started school last Thursday if we really needed to. And they, they had the building in a place where it, it was ready to go. So, so, kudos to, to your team, Jerry, and, and cooperation with CMTA. I did, to, to your question, I think Jeff about, did it pay off the way that, that we, we would hope to? It's probably gonna be a year before we see any, any of the, the financial savings. I didn't see the representative at, at, at the summer conference I attended who said, "You're gonna love me even more in a year." So, we'll see.
So, we do have pay application number five. So we do have pay application number five, and this seven figures, one million, one hundred and seventy-four thousand, seven hundred and sixty-five dollars and eleven cents.
I need a motion for the approval of pay application number five to CMTA Incorporated in the amount of one million, one hundred and seventy-four thousand, seven hundred and sixty-five dollars and eleven cents for the guaranteed energy savings contract program.
I'll make a motion.
Second?
I'll second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Of those? Okay.
It's going to be one of your bigger ones.
I know.
It's in the top five in terms of pay applications, yes. Pretty much every project we did with Morel, we had one or two that was one point something million, somewhere along the way. But we, we expected one that large and, you know, that should be the last one of that size.
One that touches multiple schools.
Yes.
So it's not just one school.
So now, now we move on to the athletic complex at Tower Park. I think over the last month, a number of people around the district have started to realize how much goes into trying to tie up all the details and the planning and the design of one of these projects. I think just about every day I go to Brian, we might need to meet about this or that. We've had a lot of meetings on all these fine details, whether it be about the complex itself or the cooperative work with the city. We're having a number of meetings this week and next week related to relocation of utilities. Trying to make sure that we're doing everything we can to do that in a coordinated, coordinated effort so that there's no impact on the neighborhood back there. You know, one of the prime focuses of this project was to improve that part of town and improve the situation for that neighborhood in addition to making our soccer and track complex better. And there's a lot of details that go into that, whether it's working with Good Energy, S D One, Ultra Fiber. There's a lot of planning, and I think some people are starting to realize how much goes into that. We met with Datronics today about video board and other things that they would be potentially providing on the project, both from the soccer and track and just general community use perspective. So I thought that was a really good meeting and gave everyone involved some clarity and direction on the design process for that. If you have questions, obviously not any pay application yet, but we do have for you requests to approve. Last month I asked for a BG three for design development drawings. There's also a BG three for construction documents. This is where I said last month you would be approving the documents that would be going out for bid. Now, these are ninety-five percent complete. There's always a little bit of of last minute tweaking, last minute things. You know, we get feedback, we make some changes. We talked about some of those Thursday by the addition of family restrooms in front of the complex, something that we felt would benefit community members as they come use the track, things like that, so. Would you approve tonight a slightly change before it goes out the bid? And then even during the bid process, there could be addendums issued which make small changes based upon questions we get from interested bidders.
I was just going to say, you know, per the speaker's request at the beginning about a community forum, you know, I mean, there's some things that we know that will, to make this project work that are going to happen. The track is going to flip nine, you know, from where it is today, so, which is going to cause some road impact. But Sergeant is not going to close. So a while a community forum probably isn't necessarily, well, we do want to coordinate with Sergeant is that we do know the road front that goes next to the track would change, so it's going to be impacted at some point that goes into the park. So we just want to make sure we coordinate with that, anybody that's back in that neighborhood, so they're aware that of our schedule. Which we don't know the schedule yet, but when we do.
We did get a lot of good feedback at the community forum that we did have with good suggestions from a lot of the neighbors back in that area. I think we took into, you know, changed some things around after that.
Right. I mean, it was, you know, a thought whether we closed the road, that side road there or not, and turned it into a walkway or a bike path, and there was a lot of good feedback about what to do there, so. Otherwise, yeah, other than that, I don't believe there's any impact back there. We'll get all the cars off the road, which would be great. But I think the, the connection to the park is, you know, is a main one, so we just want to make sure the timing, hopefully it's not, not long. Not doing crazy things there.
The, the, the only concern raised that I don't believe we, we, I believe we addressed every concern that was raised with the exception of one, and that was, there was a small, there is some loss of green space a little bit where the road relocates. But, but every other concern that we heard at that meeting, and I definitely want to, want to field additional questions after this meeting or one-on-one. But, but there will be no closure of, of the roads. There will be connectivity to the, to the, to the park. There'll be addition of sidewalks that connect the Sergeant neighborhood to, to the park. There'll be significantly more parking to prevent more of the cars from, from parking back along the street and into the neighborhood. The, the sound is, is, is going to be pointed away in more directional away from, from the neighborhoods. The sound or the, the lighting is, is modernized so that there's significantly less light pollution that comes from, from some of those events. So there's a, there are a lot of, of improvements and, and upgrades that come as a result of it. I'm actually pretty excited that the entrance to, to that will slow cars down so that there's not speeding around kind of blind curves. So, so I'm, I'm excited to share with anybody who, who would, who would like to see it, so we can get it going.
Anything else? Okay, I need a motion for the approval of BG three for construction and bid documents for the Highlands Athletic Complex at Tower Park.
So.
Second?
I'll second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay. I think you're finished. Thank you.
Thanks, Jerry.
Jamie, you're next.
Hi, good evening.
Good evening.
I am here to discuss our agreement with the City of Port Thomas for our School Resource Officer. This is usually an annual topic for us that enhances our emergency plans at each of the school levels. And I want to take a moment to recognize that the city has been a wonderful partner with us in the past, and we're looking forward to moving forward through this twenty-three, twenty-four school year with our S R O program. Because it is a safety issue, I will leave it on some of the details that we would share and disclose so that we can protect that of the plan of the schools.
Questions at all? Right, we had some discussions Thursday.
And I think, can't we say, an increase in terms of in hearing what people have said in terms of the need for school safety, obviously heard and attempting to answer. Is that correct?
Yeah, I mean, the city's been so fantastic to work with, and, and really what, what we have in our agreement, two, two big pieces. One is, it's important that we've been in compliance with, with the requirements that we've, we've had to put forward, and secondly, in cooperation with the police department, we're following the full recommendation of what our partners
And then we argue a neat a little bit. We're sitting here in this building and we're a couple hundred feet, you know, away from the middle school and high school, and adding this, I think, just further kind of takes us to another, another level, so. Something that a lot of people, once you say that, that it's like, oh, yeah, yeah, that's a good point. So we got a little unique setup here, and that's a good thing.
Absolutely. We found our response times are minimal, within less than a minute.
Yeah.
Okay, anything else? Okay, I need a motion for the approval of School Resource Officer Agreement with the City of Port Thomas.
I'll make a motion, Jennifer.
Second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Thanks, Jamie. Okay, Brian, you're next?
Yep. The, the next request is, is surrounding a, a request on behalf of the board to allow us to, to bring back our employee perfect attendance incentives and enhance them, you know, a little bit. Prior to, to pandemic, we, we had a very regular celebration at our opening day where we recognized any employee in our district that had perfect attendance, and we know that, that it can't replace a person when they're absent. And at the same time, we know that, you know, there are legitimate times that people need to, to be out and miss. At, at the same time, we think it's really great to incentivize and to recognize those who are able to, to, to achieve that perfect attendance and sometimes make those difficult choices to, to do so. We already have a few things in, in board policy. For example, an employee that doesn't use personal on emergency days, those can roll over into their sick bank. Those who have perfect, perfect attendance, we add an additional sick day into the sick bank at the, at the end of the year. That's meaningful because when a, when an employee retires, there's a, there's a buyback from our district that, that not only is a, is a nice bonus for unused sick days, which, which actually save the district money, big picture, because we're not paying for subs and, and you're, you're getting the whole benefit of, of the instruction, but it also impacts in a positive way employees' retirement forever when that's added, so. So it has a lot of benefits to it. What, what we're asking to do is, is to have, to bring back the, the, the last piece that was lost when we necessarily want to encourage people maybe needed to stay home for sure to do so otherwise. And, and then to put it actually into, into a paycheck in, in the new year as opposed to some of the old ways. The other thing I'd like to do after hearing some of the ideas from, from the board that are retrieved is, is to develop and create a monthly celebration and sort of incentive program where we have a drawing for people who are, who are making good progress towards that perfect attendance award. That's what we're asking for tonight.
Questions? All right. I need a motion for the approval to authorize the superintendent to award a yearly perfect attendance bonus and develop monthly incentive drawings September through May.
Thank you, motion to approve.
Second?
I'll second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? All right, thank you. The next part is key. Got some discussion items from you.
Good evening. Thank you. Tonight I want to be talking about our A C T and A P reports, the assessments that are taken at our high school. So these are in the spring, May rather, at the high school, and so first we're going to talk about A C T. You know, really excited to announce that, you know, our high school continues to make growth, steady growth on A C T. Our highest score here is at a twenty-three point two. Don't have state average yet, so we're waiting on those scores to come in. But even you can see like a tenth percent of an increase when you're talking about that many students that are assessed is a, is a pretty significant increase, and so really pleased with the progress that's happening with our high school students. This is our eleventh grade students that are assessed on A C T, and, you know, while A C T is certainly very valuable for our students, we're looking at scholarships, when we're looking at potential monies or different qualifications in different schools or programs we're looking forward to getting to. You know, once they move on past high, A C T is certainly a great measurement of their success, so really pleased with the progress that, that we've made there. When you look down just the percent of students that meet, met college readiness benchmarks, you see different content areas that are broken out there. And, you know, what they actually want to highlight out of this graphic is the see this steady increase of students who've met all four benchmarks, and so what we're looking at there are students who are continually making progress, they're hitting those benchmarks, and that really speaks to that level of instruction that's happening, that tier one, in-class level instruction for all students, so really pleased to see that that number is steadily increasing. Any other questions about A C T?
Questions at all? It looks good. I'm, I'm looking at science because science was always a hard one because of, you know, it's much more about math than it is just science, and so I think they may, and that becomes kind of the fourth one, one benchmark, so I'm pleased with that.
So this is the class of twenty-four.
Yes.
This is, so juniors who had high school impact from COVID too, so we're kind of keeping that context in place. Like you said, we're pointing in the right direction, so that's nice to see that trajectory.
And it is every single junior, so that's another thing to, to remember. About ten years ago, when we went to, to full school state testing, and, and it took a handful of years, but, but our students, where we, where we test every single student are outperforming students back in the old days where it was only the college-going students that took those tests.
Just the next slide here just talks about the trends, so you can see the trends over time, excuse me, the scores. And so again, you can see that even that one tenth of an increase is, is really substantial, so again, overall really pleased with our A C T score results. Next, we'll talk about our A P report. And what I'm going to share tonight with you is just, you see the quantity, total number of students that are engaged in those A P coursework and at rigor, and the number of exams that are given. So the bottom row there, we have four hundred and fifty-nine students that total A P students, but the total of exams by those students was over nine hundred and sixty-two. And then students that passed, we had three hundred and eighty-two students pass, so the total number of, percent of students that passed an A P exam was eighty-three percent, so really proud of the, not only the quantity, but the quality of students that are taking those A P assessments, which is also not reflected on here. Give our plug for our middle school. We had twenty-five eighth graders that took the A P exam, and I think we had thirteen that received a passing score, is that right, Mr. Robinson? And so thirteen students are in college credit as eighth graders that A P computer, C S P class, so A P computer science principal class. So again, really just talking about, I think this demonstrates that, you know, when we challenge our students and provide our students opportunities to take rigorous level of coursework, this data would certainly recognize or represent that they rise education and they do a fantastic job, so really proud of the work that's happened at the Highlands High School and Highlands Middle School, with not only A C T, but A P as well.
So you'll know, you've noticed that the numbers go down year to year, the number of A P students. So, and then, you know, I know there's lots of opportunities at the high school for students to take, so is there, if you would look at our high school students and our tests, where we are, are we at an optimal level? Should it, do we want it higher?
Yeah.
Do we always want it higher?
No.
Or, you know, is there, where's the balance?
All right, so I think that is, I think that is the question, right? What is the balance and what is the discussion? When we look at what are the students' opportunities to earn post-high school credit, you know, you're looking at dual credit, you're looking at advanced placement, and so I think we've seen those numbers increase. When we look at students that are industry certifications, who are completers in our C T E programming, it's kind of the, it's really a holistic picture, and so I don't, I don't know if we can silo and say one thing or other. I think it's important that we look holistically at our entire program and say, where are we at? I do stand by the fact that I do think, you know, what I have learned more than anything this first year is that the more rigorous opportunity that we provide our students, I think we're going to see some success with our students. So whether it's dual credit, whether it's A P,
Right.
we want to continue to provide those rigorous avenues.
And I like that we're, to your point, maintaining that variety because you will see in some districts and in some high schools a focus on one over the other, but allowing students, as we talk about individualized paths, what is most beneficial for their future certification in the industry, is it advanced placement, looking at the colleges or the type of programs you might want to get into versus dual credit, knowing you might be going to you know, the school where you're receiving the, the dual credit program. So I like that we maintain a healthy representation in all those areas.
Yep. Last year we had a hundred and thirty-four kids take dual credit. And so if you consider the computer science pathway, or pathway that Mr. Robinson worked on with all of us, and you see that pathway is two A P courses and then four dual credit. So a lot of the work that we're working on is going to be a mix of those, so like these eighth graders who took computer science, this year they're taking the, the college dual credit class. And then next year they'll take the dual credit class, and then the year after that's when they start
So they don't have to compete with each other. They can actually sometimes even
So and then as a high school So and then as a high school, what we're looking at with this number is also how many kids get the early college experience. So we're keeping track of how many kids took an AP, a dual credit, or how many kids went to like, tech school, went to an industry cert. And so, you know, our goal is that every kid that leaves the building has one of those three experiences under the belt by the time they graduate.
There is, you know, I would say, you know, across the country, there's a conversation about some dips in achievement scores, and you see it at all levels. I think there's also some dip in what students wanna take on. And so I, you get asked, is this the right trend, or is this the right number? I think there's probably still some room for us to look at the individual student, at the individual student level and see where they are. So I don't have an answer to say that it should be ten percent more, twenty percent more, but we should definitely have a look at what kind of courses are students signing up for, and students who can, should, and when they, if they can and they should, eventually they will, right? And it's sort of that expectation for kids to maximize what they're capable of. And so I think there's a lot of data that would say, when are you more prepared to be successful in college? And is it two AP courses, is it three AP courses, is it one AP course? And there are some trends that you can report to and report. I would say it's knowing kids well enough at a personal level to know what they need to be motivated to do a little bit more than what they think they can do. And so I think, I noticed that when we look at enrollments for this coming year, there were several courses where we believed that we were right at optimal level, and there are a few courses where we said we could expect a little bit more, and we're gonna see that this year with even more kids in there. So I really think responding to patterns with students is what I'm most proud of with our high school and where they're at right now.
Keith, you brought up the eighth graders. I was talking to one of our teachers yesterday, too. He had, he said, last year, I think it was first year, ninth and tenth, freshmen and sophomores taken. So I think you mentioned something about that last week, too. And he was surprised with how successful they were in the AP class. So I think you, I forget what the match were, but.
Yeah, that was at twenty-five and thirteen, so twenty-five kids, twenty-five acres took that AP computer science principal. Thirteen earned a passing score.
And then there's like a seventy percent pass rate for human geography, which is a ninth grade course. And then seminar, AP seminar is the tenth grade course, correct? Which has a really nice.
Ninety-eight.
Yeah. Ninety-eight percent, kind of almost in it.
Well, and what it does is it gets them, you know, the rigor starting earlier, and so then the rigor continues. I did a visit to UC, and because kids are coming in with so many dual credit and AP scores, I mean, they're now sitting down with kids and going, okay, in four years, you can get a master's. And so let's figure out what that, what that road is gonna be. Or you can get two undergraduate degrees. So they're trying to, you know, navigate through that as well. The other thing is, it really comes down to rigor. And so then your ACT scores go up, the more rigorous, the sooner math is in their schedule. So there's a lot of things that, you know, become a very good thing to do, not just taking AP, it's just the rigor. And those kids, you know, it's, we could go in here and talk about the value of the two, but the kids that got the two, eighth graders that got the two, it's not like, it's not gonna serve them well, you know? It's gonna serve them very well, so.
The most money you save in college is by finishing in four years as opposed to five. And so there's a significant value in being prepared for a level of challenge because you've done it before. That's what we see with a lot of our students.
Well, the other thing I wanna say, this is aside, but during COVID, some schools went test optional. And I'm hearing this is the last year. And so our juniors that, well, you know, the juniors that, you know, will take it this year, their scores are going to, I mean, for every school are going to count. So it's nice that we don't have to ramp them back up. I mean, we've been continually making strides, because I've talked to a lot of people at schools that are going, goodness, what's gonna happen? I mean, how, what's gonna happen now that it counts, and we haven't really made it a priority in our building, and we continue to do that. So I appreciate that.
Well, as a parent, paying a couple of tuitions.
Yeah.
Just, it's huge. I mean, I've got one kid who'll graduate early, thinks what they got at Highlands, and another who came in well-prepared. So it's, you know, you don't wanna just look at it for the money, but it is nice.
Good luck in the next team.
Thank you. I do, I do all work.
All right, gonna do the areas of emphasis?
Yes, so we met as a board team and talked about what our focus and goals would be for the year. And so I won't read through every point of this two-page document, but we did share with our, for our whole district, some of the highlights. We've attached to the agenda some of the points of emphasis. There really are four big areas that have subpoints to them that will guide the work that we do this year. It'll guide my professional growth plan, it'll be the goals that our leadership team has. It'll be what we report back to you all probably in May or June this year in terms of progress. But the big four buckets are gonna be, how do we make sure that we continue to enhance our status as a destination district? So how do we determine if we are, if we are engaging in empowering our staff and their voice and making sure that this is a place where people want to come? Not only families wanna move to, but also faculty and staff wanna be here as well and that we draw, draw in. So with that, on Wednesday, we're gonna probably have the largest enrollment we've ever had in Fort Thomas, including the largest tuition class that we've ever had. So very, very excited about that, that's a pretty good indicator. The second part is to really engage our strategic plan through, and as a strategic focus with our leadership implementation teams. So there's some subpoints around there. The third big bucket is around instruction and achievement, making sure we maintain that focus on a really critical and creative classroom environment where kids are creating, performing, designing, and achieving at really high levels. And then the fourth big bucket is around partnerships and voice. And so you'll see that we will continue to focus our recommendations within the budget to make sure that we can enhance salaries for our staff, that we also work towards engagement, surveys of not only staff, but also parents and eventually community within our strategic focus. We're gonna really make our portrait of a graduate or Fort Thomas graduate the center of the focus and look to see if there are some ways that students can have their own ownership and reflection and that be some of the other four priority areas supportive. Thank you guys for bringing us down to four instead of five. But that group's actually gonna have some real actionable work. We're gonna work hard at improving attendance this year, both on the student side and staff. I would say we have amongst the best on both of those in the state, but it can still improve what we wanna see in Fort Thomas compared to, comparing to ourselves, which is really what we should be looking at. And there'll be a good chunk of work around the Tower Park project. And we'll know a lot in the next month as to what that timeline looks like, and we'll be there. And there are a lot of other specifics in there as well. Exciting, exciting year, we're fired up, we're ready to go.
You did a good job with this. I'm interested, Jamie and Ethan, you and all the building supervisors and assistants and principals and everybody, you did a good job.
Well, this is the high community board that really, I think, works as a team to know our district really well and pushes forwards, so, so their complacency, for sure.
Questions or anything? Okay, the next section is board committee updates. We kinda talked about it, we brought us, but.
Glenn mentioned the Hall of Fame, the blue and white scrimmage, they recognized those individuals, and then they did their event at the country club, so that was successful.
It was Saturday night?
Yeah. It's a hot off the press.
Yeah.
Any others?
Sarah and I had our audit committee meeting today. It was control.
Thank you, thank you for serving.
But no, on a serious note, we've had same auditors for a little while now. They know us very well, which is great, so they know the questions I ask. And Andy is very buttoned up in that meeting, and, you know, it's year after year, I get compliments about how prepared we are. And so I think that, you know, Andy and Brian and some of the other staff that helped them out make that work very well. So today was just prep day, they'll be doing the audit, I think, next week. And then we'll get a report later this year, this calendar year. Very exciting.
All right, and then we talked a little bit about practice committee, but I wanna also talk about Peggy and Nancy. Peggy Hughes and Nancy Gessen Hughes, we're like the three-headed monster when we do that. Everybody, we all talk, and we all go, yeah, we go into our corners and do things. So, you know, feeding what, three hundred and fifty people?
Yeah, really.
I know, so.
It was packed this year?
It was packed, and it had lots of energy. And I was telling anybody, the board who could come next year, it's joyful, which is, you know, I'm always a more joyous. And we will have enough money left over that we will deliver some treats during the year, too, so.
Bagel base.
Bagels.
Those carbs.
That's right. All right, anything else? Okay, we need to do the approval of the consent agenda. With all board members having had the opportunity to review and pursue any questions about, about all of the items contained therein, I need a motion for the approval of the consent agenda.
So moved.
Second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, it passes. Any other business, Brian?
Me? About school, business, and us.
And.
Right.
Right.
School events are well underway.
What did you say, Moyer and Johnson's tonight? I know the middle school was when we were meeting on Thursday.
Yeah, yeah, I was gonna say duly noted elementary principal.
Okay, no other business? All right, good luck to all the students and teachers on Wednesday. So with that, we are joined, adjourned.